First back on item on the docket is the public grant proposed 2019 to 20 school year calendar. Any public comments?
For sure, we have verified.
Is it a last year isn't open Easter?
It's not, I'm there Diane because we don't do senior dead week anymore. So I didn't, I don't know.
So we're aligned with D-Mac.
We're aligned.
And West Des Moines and all those.
I agree. So anything all the public will go to D-Mac.
Okay.
Since that's where our can say class there.
Okay.
One thing, a question I saw, so this year we bumped up graduation. It's back to normal day?
Yeah, because your seniors on your calendar can only be forty hours lasting the total. So I tried.
Actually, I'm happy.
Okay.
People can travel on the road.
So with the class trip this year, does that coincide with our Easter at all this year? Or next year?
I don't know, I don't know because we don't use senior head.
Right, but I mean, I know there's been a few years where they don't like it when they're on the bus.
That was last year, right?
Yes.
Two years ago.
It's been two years ago.
Yeah, two years ago. Any other comments?
And that's the public comments here.
Yep. Public comments, okay? Anyone? Randy, would you like to comment even though you're going to be retired? No?
We haven't approved it yet.
That's right. Alright, so the motion to approve, we propose 2019.
You just close the hearing.
Close it?
Yeah, just close the hearing.
Close it. Okay. And the coach's professional learning presentation.
So you can see here, I'm gonna, I'll start this off and then let them take over here in a little bit, but we met with this committee right here, Mr. Groper couldn't be here tonight because he was playing part of coaching basketball, but we met several times over the first, over a few weeks, mornings and some afternoons to discuss what professional learning would look like for our coaching staff. So how we started, we started with our purpose of activities which we've, we've had for several years now that we worked on. I think four years ago now. This is our purpose statement for all of our activities. So the first thing we did, we came up with a goal for our committee. And that's to present a sustainable framework to allow our athletic department to maintain, improve the collective culture of sports and learning, our coaches and our student athletes. So we believe that really ties into our vision and mission for the district as well. So that's how we got this started and then I'll kind of, we'll let the guys go here.
And the key to that is sustainable framework. So sustain it over years time. And what this is going to do is going to provide coaches opportunities to define their why. Clearly define it, so why do coaches coach? And one of the things is continue to be fundamentally sound, so keep going to clinics. Coaching skills, improving all of that, but then also coaching the mind. Improving on coaching the mind. Things like confidence, you know, integrity, perseverance. Things like that you want to coach. And then be focused on capturing the heart. And then the key too is a common language and a common foundation. A lot of us coaches, we, we coach the same athletes, there's a lot of two sport, three sport athletes. So we share athletes, it's nice to have a common language, common foundation. Coaches can collaborate, work together. This thing right here, an opportunity to learn from and with other coaches. Goes along with our district mission and vision. Learning for all by learning from all. Also, we'd like to establish an onboarding platform. So coaches that are new to the district, new that year, new hire. Have a platform where we can train them in this, this training. Like throughout the year, give two, three or four different trainings. So if you have a coach in the fall that maybe doesn't have time to do it, maybe have, be able to train them in the winter. And get them familiar with all of this platform. And then an opportunity to work with athletes effectively in all three dimensions, which.
So the professional development we're talking about is three dimensional coaching, comes from the 3D Institute. There, this is a pretty popular framework and we looked at a lot of different things throughout the what we, what the coaches were looking, what we were looking for. And this is the one we came up with. They always play like a champion, what drives winning, and I could go on and on with different things. So when it comes to three dimensional coaches, you look at the pyramid, there are three different things. It's a framework and that's the big thing, it's a framework, it's not a program, it's a framework. Alright, and it empowers coaches at all levels to fulfill their transformational purpose. And when we talk about transformational purpose, it's coaching through your core values and what you believe in. And so when, when you are coaching, just like when you're teaching. The kids should be able to see that and see your passion about that. And what, what your core values and what your beliefs are. So when you look at the fundamentals, that's a lot, that's what most of the coaches usually are in that ballpark. They're going to focus on speed and conditioning and weightlifting, cardiovascular endurance. That, that's usually the main thing. But what, what the framework does, it hits all, hits all three things. So when it comes to the body and the mind, okay, it's going to talk about goal setting and what you want to accomplish as an individual, as a team. Okay, not just maybe a state championship, it's becoming a better teammate and things like that. Motivation and then values, as Scott talked about capturing the heart. What is your purpose, why are you doing what you're doing?
Play that, Coach.
Yep.
So I know you guys, you all hopefully watched this, but we have a little clip we'd like everybody to look at.
...development. The professional development framework needs to be robust enough to help coaches deal effectively with all aspects of an athlete's being. All three dimensions, the skill set, the mindset and the heart set. Without proper training on second and third dimension issues. Coaches often resort to trying to fit everything in the first dimension. While there are many great programs out there to help deal with these issues individually. We provide a framework that's designed to deal with these issues holistically. Don't confuse a program with a framework. Typically, programs only endure as long as the individuals that initially participated are still involved. Frameworks however, can endure over the long haul.
So, Coach Walker. There are five requirements for sustainability within this three dimensional coaching framework. Flexibility, leadership, support, onboard, new leadership and ongoing education. And there were questions that, that were asked, does this program or does this framework provide flexibility? Is there an opportunity for once an individual gets trained for ongoing leadership support? Onboarding has to do with Scott mentioned, you know, when new coaches come in each year. They'll be trained in this, there's an opportunity for that to happen, so that's provided for. For new leadership, one of the first things I remember Rob talking about when we were looking at this was we're not just looking at this for like two or three years down the road, but this can be for way down the road because, you know, we're not all going to be here forever. And this is going to be something that will help sustain that. And people coming in down the road who aren't here yet can be trained in this and it provides for that. And the ongoing education part, there's, there's a, I believe toward the end it gets into there's an opportunity for that too. It's not just the three dimensional coaching, but there's opportunities for us to use things that we as individual coaches feel will help us grow as coaches and teachers and mentors to, to the kids that we're going to have here at North Polk as we go through.
Okay, so investing, so that's the part, investing in implementation, also obviously the money portion we'll get to. But there's three things that we have to invest in, we've got to invest in the baseline of training. And again, Ben's going to talk about this, we have to have regular mentoring, just like we do in our teachers programs. And then ongoing training and we have to have those resources to be able to pull out of this framework. This is the investment we can make with this framework. It's not that difference of what we do, we're doing in the classroom when it comes to these categories. And Ben's going to talk a little bit about each of those.
Okay, so within the, within the baseline of the training, alright, there's going to be an online certification that all the coaches will get. And then within, within the, within the, within the class or within the framework of the program. There's going to be twenty-five modules, alright, with multiple units that are going to be covering each section of the pyramid. As you go through, so it's going to hit all the different dimensions of the three dimensional pyramid. And you're going to, they're going to have courses and practical applications within the, within the, within the, within the units. Alright, and at the end is the transformational purpose. And you can compare it to a teacher's professional development, alright? You, each coach will, will, will develop a purpose and then come up with a plan of how to implement that within their, within their coaching, within their coaching field, alright? Whether it's within football track, baseball or whatever. So there's enhancing in the evaluation process, so you can, there'll be preseason meetings and you can talk about what you really want to focus on maybe throughout that year. For example, for football, if we want to talk about, we wanted to talk more about encouraging one another and being better teammates. So that's what we really want to focus on. And within each, within each indicator for each area, so for example, obviously in dimension one, they had like speed and agility, that would be an indicator, okay? But dimension two would be motivation. And then dimension three would be talking about your core values and what you really believe in. So you would select one and then you would focus on that. And then the process is ongoing year to year, so you're always trying to come up with different things that you can improve on.
Yeah, so Diane's looking at and Joe has it too, this, the tool that they showed in your video, if you got a chance to look at it. Diane's looking at it right now, but it lays out kind of what that evaluation tool looks like. It's something to be easily used not only by our coaches, all seventy of them, but also by the, the ADs that got to, got to work with them to set those goals.
So the difference of a framework, the framework is always ongoing with when, when people start a program, there's a start and an end. As, as Coach Walker talked about, this is, we want to, we want this to be sustainable over time as we are continuing on with, with coaching. It becomes an open source for anybody, for, for anybody, I could talk to, you know, the, the Huder, the Walker, to any other coach. An autonomy of the coaches and leaders, so we talk about flexibility. We want to stock our shelves with as much resource and as much information for us, but ultimately for, for the student athletes that we are coaching.
Okay, so what is the investment? So financially, this is going to be quite a bit, and Keith sent me an email and asked about some of the stuff. Ankeny, who does this, right? There's other schools that do it, Des Moines, there's a whole list I sent Keith, a few in Iowa. Did you all see that? Okay, good, so Ankeny made quite an investment this last year and I went down and visited with their AD and with Wes Simmons from 3D and they're spreading theirs out over two fiscal years. They're training every one of their coaches in this and they're using School Day to work through some cohorts like that. So pretty impressive what they're doing. So it's a hundred and twenty-five dollars a coach to get the certification. They keep this portal for their life. So once they buy it, once they're certified, they keep it. And when 3D adds stuff and changes and adjusts it and adapts, the coaches get all of that stuff. It's not a textbook that's going to get outdated, they get that stuff and they'll keep it. So that's, you know, invested for about seventy-five coaches is approximately ten grand, seventy-five is a little on the high side. The ongoing investments for each year, so if we add coaches each year, we'd want to get them onboard, we talked about the onboarding. I figure that to be somewhere around twelve hundred dollars a year to keep those onboard, give or take. You know, obviously nine or ten coaches would be working at for that kind of investment.
Okay, this is the last slide here and those of you who've been around for a little while know that we're growing, we're getting bigger. We're not exploding, we're having gradual growth. The, the numbers at the middle school and at the high school for our athletic programs are growing. A couple, just real quick examples, I coached middle school wrestling this year, this is the fifth year that I've coached on there and we had twenty-five kids in the room over in the middle school this year. And I don't know if any of you have been in that room, but you get twenty-five kids in there and it starts to get a little crowded, okay? But the first year, five years ago, I think we had thirteen kids and gradually that has increased. I just talked to one of the guys who's going to be a middle school, or has been a middle school track coach this year. They're looking at upper seventies, lower eighties, middle school track this year. And I know that at the high school, that number is in probably the mid to upper sixties at least and that has been gradually increasing. Seventh grade basketball this year as an example, I went to one of those games the other day and I talked to those coaches quite a bit. They've got forty-plus kids out, that's a lot for basketball. But those numbers, they're going to continue to increase, you know, as our school district increases. And so investing in this 3D coaching, I think is, is going to help be something that really is going to bring cohesiveness to our coaches, but it's really going to help our kids too. And one of the last things down here, it says, down here, it allows us to improve and strengthen a culture that continually supports our coaches and student athletes. And one of the things we talked a little bit about when we were going through these meetings was about our culture right now. And it's not that our culture is bad by any means, and we think our culture is pretty good right now. But we want, it can always be better. And I know, I've used a quote with, with some of the athletes that I coach and I know these guys probably have too. The quote is, it has to do with, you either get better or you get worse. You never stay the same, okay? And we don't want to maintain, we want to get better. We, we feel like we're pretty good right now, but there's always room for improvement. And this is one of the things that I think can be, you know, a real cornerstone of just, you know, improving things. Not only for our coaches, but obviously for our kids.
Okay, this is the time, anybody's got any questions, we'd be glad, the coaches would be glad to answer.
Direct those to Rob.
Do you guys see this as kind of similar to the POC process for teachers? Like are we going to have, are you guys going to be the experts? Are we going to have like mentor coaches that help out our other coaches?
Well, I don't know about that, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a great idea and something maybe we, that we certainly could look at and probably should. Because there, anytime you take seventy to seventy-five people, we're going to have some people that are going to rise and want to be and can be leaders and some of those that won't be, so especially in the onboarding process. Probably want to look at something like that for sure. It's a great idea.
What did the other coaches say?
Well, we've been through, so I don't know if you remember a couple of years ago, Joe, we had that big Heart of Iowa clinic here, we bought all the schools. About seventy-five percent of our coaches were here, seven, twelve. And Wes Simmons from 3D was our guest presenter, the main one for about an hour. And, and our coaches came out of that and they were, they had a great response, they were really excited about it. Okay, so then fast forward to that spring, about another twenty-five went up to Jefferson and, and listened to Wes kind of the follow-up presentation, again, really positive. The problem is, one-hit wonders don't work. You know, bring somebody in once, you gotta, you gotta put something together that we can sustain. And so I think the coaches are excited. Professional learnings like it is in the teaching staff, you're going to have some that are just, let's do it, some that are going to be, you know, and then they're going to be.
Sure, yeah, okay.
Just curious, some of the other programs, is the cost point similar across the different?
No, you know, the other ones, the problem with the other ones that you see, they, they, they don't really develop a framework. They, they kind of got that program where you kind of do their program and then it's like, okay, what do we do now? Oh, we can go back and review and review. Whereas this gives us some, you know, the criteria, the indicators are always the same. So if motivation is there and we want to, you know, let's say that our whole district, we see our ninth and tenth graders lack motivation, that's a spot we really need. Well, we can, as a staff, we can go get somebody and say, bring them in. We can do a book study on motivation. So the framework is there, but we don't just use 3D stuff. We use other sources. And the problem with those other programs we looked at is they had their stuff and it's kind of, that's kind of what you got. So we would have to kind of, kind of go do that. Is it doable? Probably. So the price point, we never really got that deep into those, I don't think, did we guys? On those price points, because when we went through each of them, we were like, this is the one we really think is going to suit us best.
So as far as additional content that 3D is providing, I mean, you mentioned that as they update. Do they give any metrics on what kind of frequency, I mean, is there additional, I mean, have they never added anything to the tools since they released it or is it a?
The answer to that last question is yes, they've added, they've added stuff. I only know this because I've been looking at 3D for five or six or seven.
Oh, yeah.
So, and this is not, this is not anything new to me because I've been holding this over for a while. But no, they don't tell us how much they do. I can tell you right now, which is interesting. UCF, this is, this is how UCF trains their coaches, Central Florida, which is a very big university, right? This is what, they, they train their coaches using this system. And it's become pretty popular in certain states and there's, some of the super attendants are asking, hey, can you start these modules for teachers? So they're actually going to, they're developing a system to make this not just coaches, but also for teachers. So this may someday be a framework for classroom as well as on the field. That's them, alright.
You know, there was one of the things too that, that we liked about this is that 3D does give us flexibility to use some other upside sources or materials too. It's not just the 3D stuff and, and that's all we're going to be focused on. There was a, I looked in the video, you looked at toward the end and Rob talked about the shelving and Ben mentioned that too. And, and what that involves really is, you know, getting those other outside sources that, you know, maybe we're familiar with and that we like and that, that we can use. I know Ben's done a lot of reading on, on leadership and those kinds of things and, and you know, a lot of that material really would lend itself, you know, if, if we adopt this 3D coaching. So, so we've got that kind of flexibility that we decided to go with.
So Ankeny did it last year, they started last year?
This year.
They're starting this spring, yeah.
Oh, they had, this, this spring they're starting?
Yes, yeah, they're just getting moving on.
So how does this fit in with getting other coaches and onboard too, meaning? Then we talked about getting additional track coaches and things like that.
So what's your question, Joe, how do we?
Just, as far as financials wise, can we?
Yeah.
Can we, because going to Mr. Walker's point that we're going to have to add coaches to at some point in time too.
So that initial cost, and I figured it's seventy-five, which is really more humans than we have coaching, we're about sixty-seven or sixty-eight right now. So, but, so I figure we'll have to train up to ten new coaches every year. So there is a, there's an annual, so we're talking about a twelve hundred dollar, you know, annual fee to get, to bring people up to speed. Now, so we know, our initial thought is about having this kind of in cohorts for every season. So you may not want football coaches, you take them this in the fall, but they may take it in the winter and the winter coaches the fall. And we won't just do it online. We'll do it online and then we'll get together and we'll spend some time and collaborate and then we'll review it and we'll come back and collaborate and we'll have that kind of setup.
That's where that POC kind of comes into play. Because we're going to, I mean, we're going to do some online stuff just like we do now and then we're going to be, talk about it and make this, you know, share tools and sharpen ourselves.
Yeah, I think that's the important part, bringing it back and kind of bouncing ideas out of each other because, you know, I'll admit sometimes when I have to do things for work that's just on my computer, I just go through it and take the quiz at the end and pass it to move on with my day, so. I know, it's, nobody in the room watches this.
Rob, you see the funding coming from the Booster Club and the activity funds?
No, we're actually asking this to come out of district funds.
You know, and I know that's, you know, that's a stretch, I think, for some. And Ankeny has, they're actually spreading out over a couple of years. And like I said, they're giving time and I understand that's a little bit of stretch. But as I think about this, you know, our coaches have a pretty big job here at North Polk, they have a lot to do with our kids. Our teachers are professionally developed, you know, on, on their, on business time, right, during the school day. So, and of course, it's all paid for. I think that what we're asking is that same thing for coaches. We're, we're not, we know we're not going to hit school daytime probably to do all this stuff, but we'd like your district to fund it. And then, you know, we'll probably do most of the work outside of school.
Do you still plan on adding additional coaches, right, for track and stuff like that, or we might have a potential shortage?
Yeah, we will, we'll, that's going to be ongoing to him, Joe, as we, as we continue, like, we're looking at next year's basketball already, seventh grade, it looks like another monster group.
No, no, that's fine, because I don't, I don't want to lose track of that side of things either.
No, we will not.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
You have a motion there, you want to approve this?
No, just an informational presentation.
Oh, that's it?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Did you just turn that on, Rob?
Did I?
Yeah.
I didn't, I, you want to back off?
Okay.
I tried to get him home and he did not want to.
Really? Where's Ankeny?
We do have that, we do have their voice, but we don't have, I had their suggestions, but I didn't.
While we're turning this on, I'll go ahead and have our guests that are with us tonight introduce themselves and just kind of share their role.
I'm Hannah Taylor, I teach sixth grade science at middle school.
And I'm Kelly Kucin, and I'm the instructional coach for the middle school.
So I brought these experts with me tonight to kind of capture and bring you into what they've been working on. Really for the last two years, they've really been diving into the new NGSS standards of science. And they've kind of looked at a couple of different curriculums and tonight we're going to kind of share with you Amplify. I think that one has spoken to all the educators in a really powerful way. Not only have they, and Hannah will capture this later, but not only has it really impacted her learning as a professional, but also the students' learning as well and what they've seen in differences as students. So we kind of have that towards the end, so I'm going to give you a quick overview. Basically, Amplify Science is a curriculum that really runs on hands-on investigations. Not only is it a science curriculum that's embedded in STEM, I know that that's been a hot topic that you guys have been asking for more of as a board to kind of see it's really embedded in STEM, but it's also really heavy in literacy and also math. Is another big piece that you'll kind of see and listen for throughout our presentation. So really, it's all about a. it's all about a curriculum that started out as a tech, push down, like a computer programming.
It's a digital-based program.
Yes, digital-based program. So it was really heavy on the tech side of things, and what they're asking the students to do. And it's really embedded in them really launching themselves into what it, what it is to be a scientist or an engineer. So it kinda, kinda captures that. You can go to the next slide. So last, the last two years, I'm gonna try to capture and fill in the blanks too of some of the work. So the last two years, they've really worked at attending some MISC things, also going and collaborating with ADEA to really dive into the next-gen science standards. So I'm sure some of you probably know what those are, and others of you maybe struggle at understanding all of it. I think visuals communicate really well, so I put two visuals up here, kinda breaks it down into what students do, what they know, and how they think. So those same colors are represented in this visual. So how students think, the practices, and also just what students know. And so you can kinda see some of those things in, in what makes up next-gen science standards, because it can be really complicated. Standards work can be really complicated, and we're doing that in all levels. So if you've ever partaked in that, it can get really, really heavy. So here's just some of the aspects of next-gen science. So really, the practices that the actual behaviors that scientists engage in as they investigate are bulleted down here. They're asking great questions, they're defining problems, they're developing and using models, planning and carrying out investigations, analyzing, interpret data, using math, and some thinking there, constructing and designing solutions, argument and evidence, and then obtaining, evaluating, communicating information. So you'll probably see some of that in the video, and also hear and see some of our North Polk students doing some of those things. But this encompasses really what the standards are asking students to, to do, and how they share their knowledge that way. So. Another program that they looked at was TCI Science, and feel free to chime in on some of this too. When I met with Kelly and then the science teachers at the middle school, these were some of the things that they talked about, that they kind of looked at TCI. It would be a viable option. There were just some other features that Amplify really brought to the table, that I would say, even as I was seeing it in action and watching some of it, and then hearing from our curriculum rep, makes you geek out over it, makes you wanna jump in and actually try those tools. And so just me seeing some of those things myself was like, oh, I wanna try that. Like, that feature's awesome. And I don't wanna steal any of Hannah's thunder later, but one thing that was really cool that was a piece of it, and we saw, if you're sitting in front of your Chromebook and your eyes aren't on the teacher, you can, you have controls as a teacher to, if they're going ahead of the game, you can see where they're at based off of what they're interacting on. And so you can click on a feature of that student, and then their screen goes blank, and it says eyes on teacher. And so that's just, when we think of tools and computers in front of students, sometimes we're like, are they really listening? Are they in a different program? Or what are they doing? You can really see where they're at, and I thought that was a really cool feature to highlight. You'll see some of these great simulations. I kind of talked about it before too, but there's some, the simulations that you can't create, or a textbook can't give you, I would say is a really big feature in this program. So we're gonna kinda show you a little bit of that. Just like what Rob said, that was kind of appealing to the sports piece that he shared tonight. If there's something that's updated, or a new phenomenon is discovered, or something is discovered in science, and it's very fitting to what they're doing, it is updated yearly, and a new unit could be added in. And so those features are done for you. So if you were to order a print textbook, there could be already outdated, right, of some new things that are out there in the science world. So TCI, like I said, was a curriculum that they looked at. Do you guys wanna capture anything else that maybe I haven't, or that we didn't on this slide, or is it...
When you compared them side by side, you could just tell the difference between what the teachers would have, and what the students could get out of the simulations and all the technology that came with Amplify, as compared to what the TCI had to offer, so.
And I think one, one shift to really put out there for people to think about, the teacher that has always taught earth science, and they've just lived in that world of earth science, with these new NGSS standards, they're getting asked to think about things in terms of an engineer, and dive into other avenues that they haven't, waters they haven't navigated for some of them for some, quite some time. And so one thing that they really felt was, where it's typically when you're asking a teacher to change something about their practice, could be scary, and they resort back to something that they don't know, or where their comfort level is. This really, this, I would say, this program, and what I've seen and heard of from our teachers, it's really giving them the resources that they need, so that there's not an excuse to resort back to maybe an older way of teaching something. Does that make sense? Okay. So Dan, if you wanna click that, this will open up a little video about just kind of an overview of Amplify.
...formal and informal opportunities for the teacher to assess student growth and understanding. The program's blend of digital and physical tools can be used in a variety of different classroom environments, whether each student has their own device, or multiple students share devices in small groups. And for times when computers are not available, there are printable lesson plans and student investigation notebooks. The program offers robust support for the various needs of teachers in their classrooms, from an online teacher's guide and lesson-specific differentiation strategies, to professional learning opportunities. The Amplify Science Middle School program breaks away from rote memorization and unrelatable lessons, and instead provides real, applicable, intriguing challenges, and invites students to investigate them, using a diverse and engaging set of tools, ultimately working to create the next generation of curious, skeptical, and evidence-based critical thinkers, scientific innovators, and knowledgeable citizens truly capable of completing themselves and communities in the world.
I think it was maybe about this early-ish section, so I didn't even get that, because I didn't see it.
Do we wanna watch that first?
Do you wanna see some of the first part?
I don't know, what if we missed, make us down?
Maybe, I think there was the first part, Dan, maybe the first couple. I think it goes into more details about some of the engineering features.
Multiple choice.
Yeah, there we go.
Yeah, I think that...
Welcome to the Amplify Science Middle School program. Brand-new science curriculum for grades six to eight that teaches students to talk, read, write, think, and argue like real scientists and engineers through investigations of real-world problems and scientific phenomena. Authored by the curriculum experts at UC Berkeley's Lawrence Hall of Science, this comprehensive program of detailed lesson plans, state-of-the-art digital tools, and hands-on materials is offered as twenty-seven units that can be custom sequenced for both domain and integrated models of science instruction. It is built on a research-based multimodal pedagogy of do, talk, read, write, visualize. At the beginning of each unit, students assume the role of a scientist or engineer.
Welcome to your internship at Futuro's Chemical Engineering Division. I'm Anton Green, your project director.
They're first introduced to a 21st-century real-world problem or scientific phenomenon.
Every year, fifteen million babies need to be put inside an incubator to stay warm. This is where you come in. You need to decide what materials to use in the incubator.
And throughout the following lessons, they investigate using digital simulations and hands-on tools that allow students to work the way true experts do. They also explore relevant and timely articles that reveal reading to be yet another powerful method of firsthand evidence collecting. Throughout each unit, students have multiple opportunities to engage in collaborative scientific discourse, articulating their understanding in questions to classmates, and crafting sophisticated arguments based on the evidence they've found. They also answer multiple-choice questions and written responses as the unit progresses, and craft end-of-unit written arguments, which together provide both formal and informal opportunities for the teacher to assess student growth and understanding. The program's blend of digital and physical tools can be used in a variety of different classroom environments, whether each student has their own device or shared devices in small groups.
So I kinda hit on this a little bit, and you can kinda see some of those pieces from that video. I felt like, just bringing your attention back to that, because I know when we were thinking about STEM, and just even this program that's based in it, you probably saw some of the different examples even within the video, and you're gonna hear some more from how that's really embedded into this curriculum. Obviously, when you think of our science instruction, like you think of that, I mean, I think that, that's what kind of excites us just sitting, you know, when, when you think of yourself as a learner, that is more engaging, instantly more engaging pulls you in. And I think that's what's been an exciting piece of this. The other piece that I wanna point out is, a lot of some of the research behind Amplifying, what they're seeing in schools is, yes, it's a science curriculum, but what I want you guys to think about is, it's also very heavily with literacy and math, and oftentimes setting that foundation, and some of that problem-solving and critical thinking and engineering, you'll see translate over to math. I know that's something also that we've had some conversations about, of what are we gonna do in our system to look at some of our math scores? And I think this is a piece to that overall puzzle that could really provide some great problem-solving and critical-thinking skills for our students. The other piece that I geek out over, and this was just me, I think it also duels some 21st-century learning for our students, instantly elevates that, and it really forces them to think about things in terms of communicating and articulating a claim and backing it up with evidence. That piece that you saw, where they were highlighting text, and then having to pull that text over and support their evidence and back it up, is similar to what they're going to be asked to do when we embrace the computer-based ISAP test. We're moving away from the paper pencil test. This year, we're doing it as a system, because there's a lot of pieces that aren't ironed out, but next year, there will be no paper pencil option. What I, what I saw with this, right away was having our students naturally doing that embedded into our curriculum with materials and things to support that, is only, it's not pulling them aside, saying now we're gonna utilize this feature, and this is how you use it on a, on a Chromebook, to then take a state assessment. It's embedded into what we're already doing, and what we're asking students to do. So, you can go on to the next one.
So this is just an example of students doing a hands-on experiment that we have in Amplify. So this was in our metabolism unit, when we're talking about chemical reactions that are happening in our bodies. So that we did a chemical reaction in class, so they can see that not all the chemical reactions are boom in your face, you know, because that's what they automatically think, that they're always happening in your body. And, you know, it was one, they all were smiling, they all loved it. And of course, this is just the bag and slate, so it wasn't anything super crazy, but they still loved it. So it was just an example of that. This is some of the students actually on the simulation. This simulation was our metabolism unit. So this system that you're seeing in this picture is actually, it's supposed to represent the human body, so they can physically see what happens when you eat food, how it breaks down into these different molecules, like amino acids and proteins and different things like that, and how it moves through the body, when you really can't show that. And so the kids absolutely loved the simulation part. It was very engaging. And that's what I really like about Amplify, is it gives us that technology piece, where it's, it's letting the kids be hands-on and messing around, changing the variables within the program. This is probably a little chaotic right away, but this is my learning, one of my learning maps. This is actually for our metabolism unit. So if you can kinda see my organization, this is our chapter one, chapter two, chapter three, and then our chapter four, which was a science seminar, where they have to support their evidence from, so for example, we're right away given a patient, we're supposed to figure out what, what's wrong with her. We eventually found out she has diabetes, but we don't know that right away, and so they have to analyze all of her data, all of her tests. And then they relate that to a different scenario. So for their science seminar, they actually related it to, was the athlete blood doping or not? And so then they had to, you know, really look at the evidence that was given to them, and they had to support a claim, whether they were blood doping, or if they were just changing their pre-race meal, or having high-altitude training. The kids just ate that up. And they were just like, we wanna know what they did. And it's like, well, we have to show our evidence, and, you know, have support for all of that. And they, like I said, they just ate it up. They loved it. So, I loved it. This is a video of, not only do we have the online simulation, but this one actually took it even more hands-on. And so they themselves, as the class became the human body, where they took apart these little pipe cleaners, were just supposed to represent molecules. And so we had a group that was like the respiratory system, and they were moving those molecules of oxygen through the body, and getting them to where they needed to for a goal. And the kids loved that too. So it was not only just the online simulation, it gave them multiple ways to help with their learning. And I apologize, the video quality's not the best, because I was on a chair, so.
So what are they doing?
So they have different molecules up here. This is oxygen, amino acids, and I think it was starch. So the one side that has the black and the yellow pipe cleaners, those are actually digestive system, and they have to break down the, the proteins into amino acids and the starch, and then they had to feed them through the openings of the cell, and then they had to take it to the different places of the body that needed it. And a lot of them got competitive with it, going like, oh, did we beat the other class? And, you know, is our body system working better? And, yeah, they use a lot of vocabulary in it too. Like, if you really listen to that, one kid's like, I need more amino acids, I need more amino acids. So it's fun to see them taking that and using it.
I think that's one of the biggest things that I've noticed with this program, when I walk in and look and, and listen to the kids, is the amount of the scientific vocabulary that they will use when they're talking about the experiments, and that they will use in their writing, when they write and answer their questions. So it's, it's been, it's been kinda nice. It's not just some extra thing, to do a vocabulary worksheet or something like that. It's just really embedded in the whole process, and it's been really nice to see.
So this is some of the stuff that we, as teachers, Anne, Anne, Dave, and I all think about Amplify. So we really like that it's aligned to the standards, of course, and the Iowa standards, both NGSS and Iowa. It's phenomenon-driven, so it takes those real-world, natural events that you're seeing in, on, in and on earth, and it dives into them, and it kinda creates that excitement and that wonder, so the kids kinda latch onto that. Each unit comes with unit questions, essential questions for each chapter. The curriculum's very easy to understand and organize.
Before we went, we decided too, as a group of teachers, that a sub could come in and teach the lesson fairly easily without having to have a background in physics, or having to have a background in chemistry, in order to teach it. It's pretty, pretty well-written, so that, you know, even if you have someone that needs just to come in and take over for a day or two, they can do it.
I really like the fact that it puts students into roles, so each unit kinda sets them up, like, hey, this time you are a medical intern, or you're an engineer. And it gives them those roles where they're gonna have those when they get a job in the future. them those roles where they're going to have those when they get a job in the future. So it kind of puts them in that mindset. And a lot of them, they like to come up, like we did the medical interns, and they came up with their, you know, doctor name and stuff like that. So my sixth graders really enjoyed that. I really also like that it makes them provide evidence and support their claims, because a lot of times, students don't know how to communicate that, and this is really heavy on, well, okay, you have, this is what you're saying, but what's the evidence to support that? And so it makes them go back and take some time to think about that. And then there's so much analytical and creative thinking with the simulations. There's tons of data that you can look at and really analyze, and so it pulls in that mathematics aspect as well. The articles are very updated, current articles that the kids, they're easy enough for the kids to understand, so it's not over their head, which is huge when you're trying to find science articles, and some of it's like, I don't think they're going to get this, you know? I'm like, it goes over my head sometimes. So the articles are written in a way that it's just perfect for the, you know, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade students. And I know Dave, Anne, and I really like that the assessments that they give are more of like a progress monitoring system. There's a pre-assessment, there's normally a middle critical juncture, and then there's an end post-assessment. So you can see the growth of those students. And even within the, you know, one or two units I've actually taught, their growth in writing through those is dramatic. And we're also very anxious to collaborate with other schools, because other schools in the area are using it as well, DCG, Green County.
Since we're single, it's, it would be really nice to have that collaboration with other communities so that we can, you know, do some of that work together.
And this is a fairly new curriculum. It's, like I said, it's probably the best one that's out there. And I know that all schools were looking, have been looking at curriculum around that with the new standards that have been out. So it does, there's some schools that are fortunate and can adopt this curriculum, and there's others that have to maybe, based off of their own personal situation, make a decision on what's best for their students and what they can afford. So, but there are some schools definitely jumping on. If there's a will, there's a way in some districts, especially some of the, just with the 21st century learning that they're going to get. And then also, it is really impacting other content areas, but it is a science curriculum that impacts other areas, so.
And then these are just some of the things when I asked my students what you like about Amplify. One of the first things they said, it was easy to get on, so when they're at home, they could still access it. And I had kids getting on it and using the simulation at home, which surprised me because I didn't think they'd do that. A lot of them said it was fun, helps me understand better. So for example, like that simulation, they didn't have to imagine how the body works, they could actually physically see it, which helped a lot of them. Realistic to their life, the engineering aspect, one example of that was with our metabolism unit, we had a metabolism engineering internship following that, where they had to use their knowledge from what we learned about metabolism, and they had to create a health bar for patients and rescue workers in a natural disaster. And then they had to figure out, okay, what do they need metabolically to make this health bar for a patient or for a rescue worker? And I had a lot of kids actually say, like, I wish we could actually physically make it because it's a digital tool. So they made the recipe, but they didn't actually make it. So a lot of them are like, oh, we wish we could have made the bar. And I just told them, due to allergies, we're not going to, we're not going to get, we're not going to make them. But a lot of kids also said that they thought they were using science vocabulary more. And there's really a lot of connections, not only to science, but to math, to social studies, to language arts, everywhere across the board.
I think they're starting to talk about that when they see it. They're like, don't we do this in social studies? Yes, you do.
So, you know, these are just implications to consider. This is for a seven-year adoption, so when you see that, the quote, it is for seven years. Looking really at, Amplify is a K8 program. There is not a high school portion of that. What I think's exciting right now is that the essential standard work that we're doing, even at the high school level, can kind of inform, you know, those next steps with that and looking at that, and units around NGSS with that. So elementary right now, we're navigating some of the, some teachers are jumping on and doing some STEM-related items, but then there's also mystery science that they're using. We met with AEA and talked, and that is aligned to our standards. You know, as we work at getting more familiar with Amplify, it might help in look at some of those things with elementary, even like four or five going into that, what that could look like even earlier. Yeah, early consumable costs, like yearly consumable costs are pretty minimal, but you can, like the activity that you saw, you can reuse those pipe cleaners, you can reuse things, but there's always some of those pieces to continue that hands-on approach. They will be able to have access to some free PD at the building. So, you know, just using tech in a more aggressive way for a teacher, you know, they're learning all those features and discovering those, but then, you know, that's a piece that we can bring in so that that is at a high level as well. You know, just different things, and they can tailor that to what you specifically want with the building. And then some days also for them to put together some materials and different things. One thing that I thought was crazy, just like how many of you guys have ever used the Google chat feature of Google, like Gmail? It's very similar. They have access to an expert. Either tech isn't working, or pedagogy, I think Anne talked about, one time we met, I was really questioning why they would teach this before this, and I didn't understand, and I've always taught this before this, but then in Amplify, it was reversed. So you can throw out a message to somebody right then and there, and within minutes, somebody is responding to you.
We had a tech problem, yeah, and turns out it's our firewall, not their problem. But yeah, they were right back on it and saying, we have tried everything, check your, you know, check your firewall, it's on your end. So they've always been very good about getting right back at us.
And something that we talked about, and John and I, is, you know, you'll see on there, there's print materials on the quote, there's print materials. Do we spend money on print materials, or do we start to look at Chromebook cards and really having that be a piece? Because in the video or even the pictures that you saw when they were looking at the simulation, there's two to one, and that's about where you guys are at, would you say your ratio is? And so that's something to consider along with this. John, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, so the science department really has went through second order change with the next-gen standards. So typically, we've taught earth science at sixth grade, life science seventh grade, and physical on eighth grade. And the next-gen standards say, no more of that, Hannah, you're teaching all three of them. So we really, once we started looking at the standards, needed to find a curriculum that allowed her to be able to teach all three areas. And this curriculum, it doesn't come as a textbook, it comes in units, units of study. And that, at the bottom there, is the workbooks for future. Hannah and I, when we got the pilot license, has created a whole workbook, and we had to send it off to the ADA to get printed, which is, how many pages?
Each one, 136 plus.
Yeah, so each kid has workbooks, and that's in six, seven, eight, and for each unit, they have a workbook. And that's where the Chromebook comes in, because that's where they can do everything online. And not going to do everything online every day. We might still have some paper and some workbooks that might be like 15 pages of 15 cents a book, right? So they're $3 a workbook. So it's, do we want to continue to buy those every year, which would be like $11,000? And a Chromebook card is like $7,500 for 30 for that. So that's just something to consider. But even with this curriculum, the new science standards have changed the way science teachers are supposed to teach. Typically, you start out with what vocab is, what you're learning, go through, get all the learning done, and then your activity would come at the end. Now, and I observed Hannah right when the free sheet first started, the activity comes at the beginning, and they don't really know a lot, and they're trying to figure it out. And that's the really, for me, as a principal and looking at learning, you're seeing them have to really struggle through things, and then Hannah gives the support in the middle. And they talked about the science seminar. We have a seminar for our literacy, where you have an inside group and an outside group, and they're talking, and they're, and it just, there's a lot of cross-curricular across the board. So it's a really nice curriculum. Support was great. Kelly's done a lot of work, Brandon has. Hannah's been great at piloting, and Anne and Dave have. And they were not very happy last year when we were going through all the next-gen standards and really worried, but very excited this year, and all three have really dove into this, so.
Have they all committed to using it?
Oh, yeah. They're all.
Like you said earlier, it's easy to go with your old standby.
That's what, so that's one of the things that we started this year. And I think Dave is seeing on his third unit. Like, they've created books because they knew our little pilot was going to run out, so they kind of created the books early. So they're definitely on board. I mean, they can't go to their own, whatever, like the textbook for life science, because Dave now has physical, he has earth, he has all that, so he's got to use the units that come with it. And they've split the units up and different things, so.
Do you see it at all impacting high school curriculum?
Well, and that's what I, I had asked TMR rep, I was having some good conversation with Cynthia about some of high school and what would that do going into high school? She, I asked her, you know, what recommendation, other districts that you support? She's like a Midwest rep. She said that there's not really a go-to for high school. Their curriculum, this Amplify curriculum doesn't go up there, because each high school course has a specific different feel depending on the course and the goals of the course. There might be a publisher that's recommended for one course, some of that. So it's some of that to work through. She says she doesn't really have a great answer, but she said she's been a part of four different district presentations, and recently, they were invited, they had invited some high school teachers to make comments about the Amplify curriculum and what they've seen with students coming in. And she said in all those situations, the teachers really gave glowing ratings about how Amplify really sets them up for more rigor in high school, so.
Are they getting bored out of their minds since they did high school biology?
Well, I think that's the challenge, right? Because they're going to be exposed to some of these things and really having this, like looking at things that we can still try to capture in a hands-on program. I think what's unfortunate is high school, I feel, just in the, as I'm starting to navigate more curriculum, it's more complex, like it almost is a barrier, so then it's like, you know, you really have to get creative with what that looks like. But we've talked about just really diving into more of, now that they're establishing some of their essential standards in units, that's only going to get flow into some of the materials we can look at in units that they want to design, and then start to look at those components that are really elevated in this curriculum and then flowing over into the high school.
What I really like about it, I think it just sets, what we're really trying to do is set middle kids, middle school students up to do, is be able to think, process, and, you know, do some of those where it'll help them in literacy, evidence, just all, it's about learning and how to learn and how to go through problem solving. It also teaches like perseverance and grit, you know, some of those, because it's not easy. I know from, my own son's in sixth grade, so he's come home and he's really talked a lot about him, but he's been frustrated sometimes when he's come home, because he's one of those that he wants the answer, you know, right away, so it's been very interesting for that.
I know when Dave gave his first assessment, he goes, there is no way they can't do good on this assessment. This is terrible, it's the same question over and over, just different scenario. They're going to just, you know, blow this out of the water, I don't even need to teach this unit. And he got the results back, and he's like, well, crap. I have to teach this unit because they obviously don't know that, and they couldn't, and he saw the progress. Then in that mid, more formative assessment, that they were making a little progress, and by the end, they were starting to put it all together and really, really getting into the understanding that they did not have, that he thought they probably would already have.
Lastly, for me, I think for their PLCs, since they are singletons, the digital piece does give them a lot of feedback, the data that they're going to be able to bring back to their teams, even though they're all teaching different, and be able to put their data in front of everybody and say, here's what I have, here's what, you know, and have really good conversations over that. And the data is electronic, so you have it like right now.
So does it give you the capability to monitor within the lesson? Like, can you monitor how the kids are doing, like during the class?
Yeah, it'll show me, and we haven't actually gotten to that aspect because of the firewall issues that we're having. But it will show like student progression and their learning throughout that.
So does the program, sorry, I'm going to use a buzzword. Does it like, does it differentiate during?
Yes, definitely.
So like the ones that aren't getting it, it has something for them to do, the ones that...
And that's what that critical assessment right in the middle is really, really important, because from there, you take that data, and then you group students, and they have normally some sort of activity. So the students that aren't getting it, I have, I know I need to hit, I need to meet with them, I need to break down how to fix what they're not getting, while the other ones still have more challenging aspects to whatever problem it is.
Well, I think just even with the digital materials, being able to reteach if you, if they have like a simulation that day, and they just need to see the simulation again and navigate it again, I think it makes that really easy to do quick time, like real-time formative assessment in response to meet those students' needs. So there's a lot of great things with that, yeah.
Yeah, that was a very cool lesson.
Yeah, the kids loved it, and I love teaching.
Well, we sat around with it when we got it.
And the firewall issue has just started, because before, we didn't have that issue. We did some big major update, but Scott's on vacation, so we'll be able to get it solved. It's just we did some big update, and now we noticed that something's going on with it. Before, we were able to do all the...
But Hannah's tech savvy enough.
Yeah.
Don't say that out loud, we're on camera.
Any other questions?
I guess the only other question I have, so you, is this, is there going to be more entrance into this space, or are there people that are developing similar tools or products that are going to be?
Well, what's funny is when the rep came, when Tana came, when she said that it started out as a computer-based program, I think what they have at their fingertips are these really innovative creators, where they, the first product that they were looking at was like, whoa, there's this gap of teacher knowledge in embedding that technology and how to use it effectively with what they were asking teachers to do. So they even had to, if I'm capturing this correctly, back off a little bit from that, but then still be able to put those pieces in.
I feel like it'll take a textbook company a little bit of time to ever get to this point, because they don't have that tech part of it. You know, they're so book-based, a textbook company, and I feel like it's probably going to take them a little bit longer to get something that, like, we've looked at other, even with TCI, where you can pull in a video or go out and search for other things, but they drop off all the time. It's never, it's never something you can count on, you know? So we didn't, we didn't find that here with Amplify, that it was...
I just didn't know what the chain standard that if people, I mean, opportunities for that themselves, and everybody just jump on it, and these guys figured it out, other people may, I don't know if anybody was on the cusp of it, and if there was anybody that was hitting the market after that.
Well, and one thing that I loved when we talked with Tammy is that PD that's delivered, they come in and ask really great questions, or we ask those questions to then tailor that PD to what they already feel that they have a solid foundation of and have been able to use and experience to. This is there, we don't, you know, that's not high-flying for us yet, we don't feel great about that piece, we want more of that. And they also take that teacher feedback to look at at the end of the year, if there's anything else that they need to add or change, they'll, there's a process for that as well.
And they look at the Iowa standards. And they look at the Iowa standards and kind of then match the, the units with each of the grade levels too. So they did a, they did all that for us before we even got it, so.
Did you guys talk about, it says a seven year lease, so seven year license? So is there, what if year three, we realize why this isn't working for us? I'm just curious if there's a, we, we capture our dollars or anything?
Um, I, I don't know. I could probably shoot, Tammy's really good at getting back, but yeah.
Just curious, I mean, if somebody else just comes onto the market and blows this out of the water, which again, it looks very cool. Everybody really liked this, but.
Well, and most, as we look at curriculum, we like once science is kind of at the middle school, they would probably depart from there and look at whether science would at other areas. And so it wouldn't be like in two years, we get something new. So I think we would give it a, adopt it, that they give it that time for navigating and trying something new with our adoption cycle, which is kind of off since there's been science and social studies added from the state that's changed, forcing teachers to look at that. So, yeah, there's, I would say that once we commit to the seven years, we commit to the seven years.
I would say we, there's also like resources out there that we might start pulling in. If we see some gaps, some different things like that, that somebody's come up with something we can always, but we might not put full around to it.
So how, which kind of goes back to the question, say that we're seeing, you know, our standards test, that, you know, we're not really performing very well with this program. What type of feedback or how quick are they to change what's in their system, I guess? Or what their modules?
Well, we only test these right now.
Yeah.
For, for the new Iowa assessments, I don't know, which kind of bung this out. Because of that, because we like the feedback. But I, our science, middle school science department's been one of our strongest parts. We've been about ninety percent across the border above proficiency wise, which is always really good. One thing I really like about this curriculum is the higher level aspect of it, the differentiation part. But that's something that we'll have to look at. Be a little bit harder now, cause it'd just be one grade for that science. Typically, we've had, you know, proficiency scores on that test, we've been pretty good. But yeah, that's something we're gonna have to look at.
Without, I guess this is kind of a dumb question, do we even know how similar the tests are gonna be? Like the old version versus this new version coming out? Cause I'd be curious to see, here's our old system, how we, how we used to teach our sciences and stuff, the old test. Here's our new math or science curriculum in the new test. If how, if we're outperforming that or underperforming it or just kind of?
What's, what's interesting is what I've been told, if we're doing paper pencil this year, that test is a different test than what if you go and jump and do the computer based assessment. They haven't given us much examples of the paper, nor have they been very helpful in what that's gonna look like, other than like a manual that's really heavily the computer based with a few paper pencil options in there. So I guess what I'm thinking is the paper pencil isn't gonna look that different for our students this year. On the I S A P website, you can go in and you can actually, there's a piece, I can send the link to Dan and have him send it to you. You can go in and look at some practice tests at any level and see what those look like in both math and reading and in the science. And so it gives you a little snapshot and you can actually almost take it and walk through it. So the one thing that I know is brand new is the writing component. So when I was saying that piece that you saw within the video that I hooked on right away was finding all of your evidence to support. So with the writing portion, they're gonna have to, to get a five on that rubric, they have to acknowledge a different claim or a different stance on something than what they are putting together and still acknowledge it and support the evidence from multi text to support that. So I think that's gonna challenge some of our students. We're really heavy, we need heard the claim and evidence. But that piece, E L A is looking at, at how those rubrics compare to what we are currently assessing students on the writing. So I think that's gonna be a curve for everybody, cause there's never been a writing portion of the test.
One, one area I think we will improve in, just from looking at the curriculum and in math is data analysis, analyzing data and maps and like science, science test for our Iowa assessments was a lot of reading charts and reading different things and making, and we didn't have a lot of that in our old curriculum. And I think it'll also help our math for that part too. But I'm excited with the new test. I'm hoping it challenges us and makes us, you know, look at things.
Great.
Thank you.
Consent items? Any questions? Comments? Did you get questions?
I did, I did.
Any partnership agreements, Justin's, Owen's design, Portia's floor?
Where's that, what is the floor, what's the details on the floor? You want to wear the old parts, the west part of the middle school? So giving all the old gym lockers can be replaced there.
The walkers.
Yeah, and then carpeting that tile there to pry it down those hallways?
Yeah, cause it's like a creepy white tile down there.
So I'm trying to try and see how we like that middle school.
I think I was gonna put a, maybe every one of those, either we don't tax on this. And I guess when we approve this, do we need, are we just approving the agreement on this sort of value? Just went in twelve five for this locker and not locker, whatever the store's name. Should all that tax exempt?
Well, we are tax exempt.
We are.
Okay, that's for any.
Everything.
Everything.
Maybe that's why. Maybe that's why I never feel. The other way around.
This is all of a sudden, I'm thinking, I shouldn't have said tax on that one. Yeah, I suppose that makes sense. Oh, it's on video.
Do you have a motion to approve the consent items? Second. Favor?
I have a name.
Any public comments, communications? Administrative reports?
I have a board report there, so let me know if you have any questions about what I published there. I did think.
What is scale?
Yeah, good. I got stuff for that.
Are you guessing your acronyms?
Yeah, so bad. So I'll take one of those and pass it around.
I think it's gonna be my requirement, if you have an acronym?
Put that in there, that's, that's why we're gonna.
We're just giving you grief Cynthia.
At least first time.
Well, I mean, we've got a lot of them. It's like a whole language.
Really?
But I did also want to thank, I mean, I think the teachers in there because of the work that it's been to start in classes, you know, create the opportunities for students. But I also want to thank you as a board because of the investment that you've made in additional faculty positions for this year. And, you know, having two counselors instead of one, we've been able to just amp up our student support and our academic opportunities. My report, you know, I commented, so we added forty seven new classes this year. We've got thirty three additional new opportunities offered up for next year. Fourteen of those are D M A C course options that we'll be teaching on site. So I'll come back and talk about that, cause it looks like we're interested in this. So this is the explanation of those partner programs, link that I gave in the board report. And so we don't read through it tonight, but what it basically does is it explains each program and where it's located and what the intent of the program is. We, some of these have been around, some of them are new just in this last year. But what I will tell you, the difference is, is the two counselors and myself being able to go out and visit and actually create the relationships with the people that run these so that we can offer the best opportunities for our kids. Thank you for that, because we can't do it without people able to do it. So Orbis is our new agreement this year with Ankeny. Orbis stands for Compass, so it's like finding their direction. But they work with businesses and help give direction there. While the students also are figuring out the direction they might wanna go for, you know, career opportunities. Central Campus in Des Moines is downtown. It's got Central Campus and it's connected to Central Academy. But Central Campus is where any student can go. You have to apply the year ahead of when you wanna go. But it's really the more intense, what I'll call C T E programming. And so our kids have access to all of that. We went down there and met with the administration at Central Campus and they, again, phenomenal and willing to work with us and our students to give them the same opportunities that Des Moines students have. And then the scale program is that Story County Consortium. And basically it's a hands on active learning. It's, it's a lot like Orbis, only Orbis isn't at, through Ankeny High School. Scale is through D M A C and partnerships with the same thing. They go into real businesses, they go into, you know, they go into Iowa State, they go into the biomedical laboratory, they work there on real world problems. Unless they're exploring possibly what they might wanna go into as a college student so that they're not spending the money necessarily trying to figure that out when they're paying for college, but can get some credit and do some exploratory while involved. And then the last couple of pages just talk through our D M A C partnership. And so there's three ways that kids can get D M A C course credit. They can go to D M A C campus, they can take D M A C classes online, or they can take them here with our teachers that are dual and certified. And so they offer it here as like a high school class, but they're also earning the college credit because we are meeting the D M A C competencies of that course. The difference is it costs the district about three hundred and ten dollars to send a student to D M A C or have a student take it online. It costs us about thirty dollars a student if we host it here. So the investment, not only financially, but it's a better course when we can offer it here. Why? Because we've got several more hours of class time here than what they put in at D M A C. It's about forty five there, it's about a hundred and twenty here. So we can really amp up that curriculum. We can make a robust rigorous experience that we want.
Forty five, what'd you say, forty five hours?
Yeah, so our Carnegie units are a hundred and twenty and the community college one is about forty five. Well, they only meet.
Three hours.
Yeah. And that's the difference, they meet maybe twice or three times a week. We meet every day, you know, for that forty six minute period. So the beauty of that is we can cover all the college competencies, but we can also then add our own. And so like I said, there's a lot more control over the rigor, robustness and experience of the class. And when it's our students that are exploring what we have, you know, college level courses, we want it to be a rigorous experience. And, you know, it just, it depends on sometimes what that looks like at the junior college level. And there's, there's an attention for that too. So it's just nice to have control over what our kids need when they're here in front of us. So this is just that, it's an information guide about those programs. Again, kudos to the counselors for the work that they've put in. And then now our job this year is going to communicate that better. So we started class registration meetings, we have class meetings, we have juniors last week, we have sophomores tomorrow, well, freshmen another week and a half. So the kids are aware of this and then we're also sending out attachments through Infinite Campus. And then April third, we'll be hosting our spring family engagement night. And the intent of that will be eighth grade parents and students coming in to hear about opportunities in high school courses. Ninth and tenth grade parents will be invited to come in and sit through and talk through like these program partners so that they have an idea of what these are like starting as freshmen, because you do have to plan for that, especially if you wanna have half a day as a junior or a senior to go travel somewhere and take these academies and take these experiences. So really trying to communicate to people like what the opportunities are and what the goal of it is and what might be right for, you know, your student or not. So trying to do that outreach piece of it. So I just want to give a big shout out to all the work with the teachers and staff as nuns to create this.
I'm really excited to hear that you have the opportunities for parents or guardians to hear about what the opportunities are. Cause just my own experience, I mean, I felt like at times I was my kid's, gotta use counselor. And, you know, I got a lot better at it by the third kid. But do we, how do we view, let's say, an online course or a D M A C course? I'll use psychology, for example. Will we teach it and then it's also online? I mean, how are we? What, why, the reason I'm asking is I think, I can't remember which child it was, but you know, there was some kind of, I think it felt like some hesitation by teachers, why aren't you taking the high school psychology? Why are you taking the online, you know, D M A C psychology? How do we frame that?
Yeah, that's a great question. We don't actually offer the same type of courses. So for instance, we have our A P psych here.
Right.
They would have to take, they have to take the A P test in order to have an opportunity to earn college credit. If they take it through D M A C, it's an automatic colleges, three college credits automatically as long as they pass it. And so there's, there's a bit of a difference there. Sometimes it's you look at the rigor of a course, like this A P class here, because it's our teacher and the A P curriculum itself is much more rigorous than what D M A C psychology class would be. For some people that matters, some it doesn't. Some they want the assurance of the college credit, some they want the challenge of, of the course. So it, someone, in some of those cases, they're seeing, it would seem like there's a similarity, but there really are distinct differences between the two opportunities. And that's what we need to be better at communicating because each individual has to make the choice as to which one is going to work best for their pathway or their plan. But typically, we don't offer really the same opportunity here of just a general high school class of what they're signing up for to take through D M A C as a college course. I have to go back and look, I have to look for sure. I, I have to look. Even for instance, like with English, you know, we have the English twelve class we offer here, but then there's the A P Lit, A P Lang. And so those are, are college, you know, options. So it's just different pathways usually.
Do you think, well, we're here to the point where we kind of help a kid, let's say if they know they're college bound, but they're, you know, where we help them understand like what is typical liberal arts core curriculum? So that they are taking classes that will apply to liberal arts core versus come into a university as an elective?
Yeah. And that is one of the things I know that our counselors talk to them about because not all D M A C credit or scale credit even will transfer over to a particular degree program, but it will count for an elective that they need to have in a liberal arts degree. Or like we've added a math college credit and our English college credits cover their Gen Ed college courses they have to take. And the counselors do reach out to, we know for instance, like at the Regent Schools, those are all accepted, or families or counselors can reach out to a school if it's out of state to see if they would accept those credits for their Gen Ed. So that work is being done and there's ways to find that out.
Yeah, it's just like, most universities have, here's, here's your liberal arts core, here's your categories, and then they have the mapping like to D M A C. And you can sit there and you can help a child say, okay, this class will figure this category, this class will figure that category.
Yeah, the Regent Schools, I'm gonna say it's easier because they do have a better just, here's the pathway to do it. It's a little tricky, but it gets to the private colleges.
Right.
And if it's N A A versus.
Right, I was just thinking, like in general, I wouldn't even at this point specific it to Iowa State universities or you and I. But I just know that was one of the things that, and not to belabor this point, but that I did with my child is we, we took the mapping of liberal arts core and what D M A C offered. And he's done with liberal arts core now, like he's a freshman.
Yeah, and that's important to do. T J Jumper came and met with us and looked at post secondary information. And I believe the stat he gave, Dan, Mary J. Hoover was in on that conversation. I think he said students have ten of those college courses have obviously a better chance of succeeding within a four year degree and graduating than those that don't have that by the time they graduate from high school. So we know that's an impact on their success in college. So that's also why we're looking to offer more opportunities. I, I, you know, I know it's a fine line between what's the high school experience versus what's getting college credit in the high school experience. But we know the way that the world's moving right now, we have to give them more opportunities to earn this here because the research is there that shows their success rate in college is much higher when they have the opportunity to have that here. So, yeah. So let me know if you've got any questions over that. Course registration has started March fifth, we're gonna take the junior class to Gilbert. They hosted. They host a major college fair each spring, there's over 70 colleges that'll be there. Our kids will travel up there, they'll tour through it about, it takes about 30 to 45 minutes to get through that and then come back. But that's been an experience that we haven't really offered a class of students before. We feel it's important as part of our college career readiness plan, giving more exposure to that. So that'll be March 5th. We've got parent-teacher conferences the 7th and 12th. We'll use the conference schedule or sign up as we have the last several times. And then I already mentioned April 3rd, family engagement night. There'll be a focus for eighth grade families in regard to just high school experience. There'll be the focus on, for ninth and 10th grade families in regard to four-year planning and partnership programs and opportunities that are there. And then the 11th grade focus will be some financial aid information. In the fall, when we hosted our family engagement night, the bigger push was really for the juniors and seniors, seniors especially, as they were kind of coming in and prepping for their final year. So we'll take, take feedback on that, too, after that happens and see if it's valuable. We got great feedback after our fall one from the parents, that it tended to be about 40 people. They said it was phenomenal, they appreciated the information, ability to ask questions. So we're working at it, trying to get more info out there. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks.
One comment, though, I'm excited about the communications thing. I know I asked about the payment for that and so how that tied in, because we've got everything set up and so I think that's fantastic.
Yeah.
Now, is the plan to, I know you said basketball, kind of all RSD, volleyball and football?
So this is really, we're trial launching it this semester. You know, you have people say, oh yeah, I'm interested to do it, but then actually see if kids are, and they are. Oh, setting up that room, using equipment like this to be able to broadcast things. It was phenomenal, too, that we happened to broadcast the one Friday night, it's, you know, basically non-viral at this point, like the timing and everything worked out really well, but that really also brought a lot of excitement for other kids that are interested in broadcasting. We've got a journalism class offering for next year that we're hoping will tie also into the extracurricular communications piece of this, so our students really can have an opportunity to write, so both print and audiovisual, because we're gonna have to be our own best salesman. Like, we don't have the local newspaper, local radio station, so we gotta figure out how to create that, and that's our goal. So, and we've got kids and staff that are interested in supporting it, so it could be really cool.
Couple things on that, the, our kids that are doing the print part actually are getting press credentials to go down and work at the state tournament.
That's cool.
And then the Tri-County Times is gonna do a, I don't know why necessarily, but they're gonna do an article on our communication club being started and then-
Hey, let them know I'm not renewing my-
I'm absolutely mine.
You just, you just did.
Stop emailing.
You didn't have to buy my ticket to the state tournament this year, you go, why? She goes, I got my press credentials.
That's really cool.
Yes. Thank you.
Mr. Uh, I just appreciate you listening to our amplifier presentation. I got a board report there, but something I wanted to add. Last Saturday, we had two teams participate in the middle school science quiz bowl competition at Ames, that was the first time we've ever done that. Daniel Wolfe, our ELP teacher, took two teams up there. They had 32 teams and they split them into eight flights of four teams. So if you finish in the top two, you got to advance to the single round elimination. And we had one team advance, which was really exciting. They, we really didn't know going up there how the competition was gonna be run, they didn't know all the rules. So you'd think like, you'd hit the buzzer and they'd say, yep, and they'd say the answer, and then points would be awarded to the other team because they didn't wait for the person running it, the moderators, say contestant three. So if they like blurted out the answer before, we lost points. So we actually did really well, but it took them a little while to do that. So, but we had a team, a team of five girls and a team of five boys that participated. They had a lot of fun, good parent, parent feedback for that, so that was, that was fun for them. I think we got beat out by Central Academy Middle School, so. Lastly, this summer, off stuff, but our basketball, middle school basketball ended tonight for boys. One of the things that I'm really excited for next year for our middle school kids for, especially like volleyball and basketball, see it a lot, we've, we've been, we have not been pushed at the middle school level. A lot of our AB teams, we have, we have 14, 15 kids that usually can play and play very well. So like our A teams, both boys and girls basketball have really dominated. And I believe next year we'll go to the Raccoon Conference, it'll be like every game, they'll see pretty good competition. Plus our B kids, too, will also see really good competition. So I'm excited for that as, as we enter that next year. That's everything I have.
Thank you.
Today is the first day of the third trimester. It's, can't believe I said that. This year has just gone by so, so quick. So this morning at eight o'clock, grades were due and report cards went home today. So we're ready for conferences in a couple of weeks. Teachers working really hard on those timelines with, with different things. There had been some extra time put into the days with the recent weather, so hopefully that's all behind us now. Really exciting work with PLC, I know you use acronyms or whatever, but for us to have that in place-
I know what that stands for.
For us to have this play in place and seeing at the elementary level, our six-person teams come together and start our essential standards work is just awesome. Have to thank our instructional coaches, Sarah Bowser and Sarah Aid for leading that process. I also want to thank Miranda and Dr. Mark for having a presence there. It's important work, it's the right work, so that we can fully say that we are training the PLC process and we will have essential standards at North Polk. And that is just a win for students and families that we can talk about what we want them to know and then we can get into the assessments, you know, after our essentials are, are done, so we're, we're not intervening on state screening tools that we've talked to you about before, but we're actually intervening on what we consider core instruction here. And that is just, it's just really exciting work. So thank you for your support in the PLC process. Teachers working really, really hard and it's, like I said, it's the right work.
Thank you.
I just wanted to highlight with Wes catching the STEM bug, that's gonna happen tomorrow. So looking forward to that afternoon with those different activities going on and seeing how that all interrelates together. Our school counselor, Brittany Hackett, she facilitates the PBIS, there's another acronym for you, committee who worked to align and, or line up this afternoon for tomorrow afternoon these activities. So it's just really a great celebration for all the kids and all their good behavior and their good work that they do. So it's a celebration for them.
I, outside of my report that I presented, I, too, had just an awesome time hanging out at the elementary and seeing both schools collaborating work and talk through some of the, the essential standards that they were working through. I think it goes, just, it speaks volumes for the leaders in the building, the instructional coaches, how that day flew, you know, the time there flew when we were in there, but they got so much accomplished and it was just really great to be a part of that and see even the coaches facilitating a lot of that work, but those active members of the PLC really diving in and rolling up their sleeves and really trying to understand the standards. So that was really great to be a part of. I, we also spent the day today, this, my bucket is overfilling, I'm like a huge culture person, and today we went to SAI and the book that all of our work was based off today is called Contagious Culture. So really looking at our culture and how we can be intentional to create an amazing organization and working together and it was just, I was like on cloud nine, I had to, they talked about leveling up and the presence that you bring into the room and when you're interacting with others. And I always, I was like trying to like elevate myself down because I was being so excited. So I, I don't know if the table felt that today, but it was just great to go, push pause, they challenged, we, we weren't around our tech at all and it was almost like that was one of the best parts, even though you start like, oh, should I check my email? But it was good to just depart from that and be all in and just learn with each other and learn from other systems of what they're doing and, and just being intentional about climate and culture because it's such a big piece of our school. So I can't say enough about that learning and what we get through SAI, so-
What does that stand for?
Uh, School Administrators of Iowa. Yep.
Sorry, I don't know all of them.
That's like a professional organization that administrators are, belong to.
Okay, all right, thank you, sorry to cut you off.
No, no, you're fine.
And it's you and MJ at the Career Department?
Yes, we are. So that's kind of a, a piece that I felt like I brought, that was close to my heart from last year, working at Iowa State there. It's just a great opportunity, there's districts from all over the state, plus, you know, you have Denver there, you have Alaska, you have Texas, Springs, a big group. And it's really just a great way to promote your district and what you're about. It, it doesn't really matter if you have a ton of positions available or not, but there's opportunity to do onsite interviewing if you have, if you're there and ready to do it. They're asking some of us to, what, what I'm waiting to hear back from is we'd like to do some mock interviews with some candidates and provide that for their teachers, the teaching candidates. And then there's a panel that's also there for candidates to ask questions about from different systems and then they do some breakout sessions and learning. So I don't know if we're gonna get asked to do that, but one topic that was thrown my way was about just teacher leadership and what people can expect when they come to different systems. It looks different in each system, but kind of what the components are of that, so I'm waiting to hear if that's something they desire for a session. But it's a great way to just promote what we have going on here at North Polk and we've collaborated with Jess to do some marketing stuff for us in that regards, just to attract people to our system.
Great, MJ?
A couple things I'm gonna hand out to you. I think I put in the EL portion on my report, the Iowa Seal of Bi-Literacy Guidance. My acronym for that, it's just all spelled out there, so there's a couple to hand out on that. And this is something that the State Department started to talk about last year. So we can start to recognize our students that are graduating as in the Seal of Bi-Literacy if they meet the certain requirements that are in this guidance. So that's something that we're starting to talk about, but there's a lot of pieces that we have had in place first before we say, yes, we're gonna do this. And you have to have all the pieces in place by October of next year, as we start to communicate with families and kiddos and start to get this set up for our kids as they graduate from North Polk. I think a lot of this came from looking at, yeah, you take four years of Spanish, but already really, you really know how to speak Spanish and so forth. So finding those kids that really are bi-liter in different languages and also as we look at just beyond Spanish and French, I mean, Mandarin's become a big language out there that kids want to start to learn, German, Indian and so forth. So this is just kind of the start of the conversation and I met with Michelle, I don't know how Michelle and I kind of got at the high school, the Spanish teacher at the high school, we've kind of got roped into this and started talking about it with the DE that came and presented to us. So I'll kind of keep posted on this as we get pieces put together, but I think it's a good, I don't know why we wouldn't do it, I think it's a good opportunity for our kiddos. I talked with Eric Cook at the DE as well, who's Bureau Chief of this department, and then kind of mixed up sort of talked with universities and say, okay, so you see a kiddo with this seal, what are we gonna do for them and how are we gonna advance them when they get into that college level? And what are you gonna do for them since they have above and beyond to get this seal? So those are conversations the state has at that level. So just some information for you. And the other thing we wanted to add is Ann and I met with Special Olympics, oh, what, a few weeks ago? So Special Olympics is a program, and I worked with Special Olympics a lot when I was a principal in West Des Moines. And so we are going to start off, her teacher just took off on it and said, yes, we want to do it. So we're gonna start off small and they're gonna do some play dates this spring and get that involved and then they're gonna meet with Central as well next week and see if their teachers want to get some of their students started involved in Special Olympics. And we can get as big as bowling in the fall, track and field in the spring and lots of different events and also include some peers with that. So kudos to Ann and her teachers for getting that taken off and then we'll kind of see how that builds up district-wide.
Great. Anything else?
John likes to steal my thunder, I'll then talk a little bit more about the Raccoon River. No comments, okay. You shouldn't look at me, you should have put it on my calendar. I know. I've been meeting at the regular Raccoon River conference meeting, so there's not a lot to, you know, go over about that, we're excited about it. Get on and look at next year, the middle school schedules are almost completely done, we started working on the next RSD year's schedules as well. I'm excited that the Raccoon River ADs are actually, I think they're taking a look at themselves and asking Tim Posetti and I about, hey, how to do things at the Heart of Iowa. It's, it's gonna be a fun transition, I'm really looking forward to it. Like John said, it is gonna be, and a lot of sports and activities will give us some extra opportunities, so it's gonna be good. Obviously, girls going to the state basketball tournament is exciting, we're working through some of those things as far as students and when they're getting out, how they're getting out and all those things. So, you know, girls have had a really good season, but, you know, I also will point out that some of our other student athletes have done a really nice job this year, a wrestling teammate, great progress over the years, I've watched them. You know, we did not qualify as many kids in the state tournament as we wanted to, but as I looked at the number of kids that were very competitive, exceptional this year, was a real bit of growth. I don't know if any of you got up to the game in Gilbert the other night, we lost by one, the boys' basketball, ADM news by 18 earlier in the season, and we had that game all wrapped up. So I, I like the growth I'm seeing in those programs and how hard the kids are playing and I'm really encouraged by that. And then for the rest of the week, rest of this last month, it's been a busy month with rescheduling and the FINARS have been really rolling, too. You add all those things, you know about rescheduling, right? So it's been, it's been quite a month, but I like how our kids have responded and, you know, it's been a good month for them.
Great. Any questions on my report? I'll be glad to answer.
Your thing.
Supervisors.
I have one comment that needs to quit snowing.
So much for your, we go in for so much, that, that dealia negotiated, that one. Yeah. Yeah, we got four inches yet.
We're at 46.4 inches for the year and our contracts for 50.
Come on.
And we have-
Does it expire tomorrow? Can you move the snow on Saturday? Isn't that crazy?
This is the first year I've ever hit the 50, it's just crazy.
And it's the year you picked to retire, too.
Yeah. So I don't know where we're going forward, because we still haven't paid the last installment of our quote-unquote budget building.
I know, it's due.
And it, but on, on an upside to this, I had a conversation with Charlie at Total Quality and he said, look, we're partners in this thing, we'll work together to figure out how to, you know, get through it all. Because what I'll have to do, obviously, I haven't budgeted for this, I'm gonna have to pull some money out of what we normally would do proceeding, maybe to, to transition to, to help pay for this, because it's just gonna probably blow this budget out of the water this year.
You can't, you can't control that.
No.
Can't control it.
That's all I have, unless you have anything else for me?
We're just rolling right along, we started the certified budget process.
We're just rolling right along, we've started the certified budget process, so we'll be having some meetings here coming up in regards to that. It looks like we are going to need to amend our this year's budget, so we'll have a conversation about that coming up as well. Other than that, our preliminary information that we've received for health insurance, we had zero percent increase on our base plan, so I'm hoping that that helps in all other areas, but I don't have official numbers, they were supposed to send something to last weekend, I haven't seen anything, so. Other than that.
When you say our budget, what, what potentially could we do?
Just the, for the amended budget, it's, on the, I need to look at it a little closer, but there's one area that we're probably going to be under from what we published, and that was in the construction.
Construction, pay for more construction this year, we thought we'd have it last year.
Right.
Doesn't mean draw on money, just that we're gonna exceed what we thought we would spend. Oh, okay.
So it, it just needs to be amended so that we don't go over on that.
So there's not no hidden thing?
No, no.
We're missing five hundred thousand dollars in millerage.
Uh, no.
Okay, all right, thank you.
No.
Don't give me a heart attack.
But that, that, that was more of just a heads up, that that process will be taking place.
Mr. Reeves isn't here? So Scott's not here, and so.
Well, everything's been going pretty well, buses in winter do not get along, but we've, we've only had some minor glitches, a few buses haven't started, but most of the time we got everything rolling, we got enough backup buses, and the backup buses are filling in nicely. When it gets really cold, I have a driver over at Wes go pre-start the buses over there so that we know that they're running. One time this year that we didn't do that, and a bus didn't start, and we had to scramble, and we were, I don't know, just a few minutes late getting them done with their route. Our gas buses have started every time we don't plug them in, they are doing really good with winter, it's the diesel that does not. The polar vortex, I come in early and thought we better get the buses rolling, even though we had a two-hour late start, mechanic already had them all started except for one, one bus didn't start, but he had a backup, so he had it all done. The drivers were really appreciative, because when they got there, they, it was all done for them. That's all we got.
Good deal. All right, thank you. Dan?
Just thank all of those people during those late start days, Randy's crew getting things ready, and Mike and Rup are every morning just trying to get some things done and decisions made, so it's a good crewwork for that early morning.
Anything else? All right, new business. Academic calendar, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty academic calendar. Any questions? Shouldn't have been more, some of our courses this year.
Other than Mondays, one hour late start every Monday instead of two hours every other week. So one hour late start on Mondays instead of two hours every other week, on that calendar right there.
Hopefully.
Yeah, that's why the yellow highlighted on every Monday, there's one change, other change.
What was the driver for that?
PD every week, the PLCs every week instead of the two-hour late start, that's the main driver.
Sunday, he does.
There's his Wednesdays.
Yeah. Every week?
Yeah. Is that some school that are PLC or weekly?
I think we might have talked about that at one board meeting.
Yeah, because I stepped by with the survey results in there. I thought that already.
Exactly what the teachers wanted, right?
Yeah.
Never mind.
That's why none of the rest of us had questions. Go ahead.
I think we would have talked about that, but.
No, I didn't mean bad, I just, I didn't want Keith to think none of us care.
Another thing I wanted to know.
There was a teachers kind of push for it, wasn't it?
No, when I did the survey, that's what they wanted, yeah. Then we're, instead of sending people in the summer, notice we have three days off in October for professional learning, PLC conferences in Des Moines, so then we get everybody there.
Have we made sure it's not homecoming?
I don't know when that week is. Rob didn't even know. Homecoming's canceled.
Because if it's homecoming, you're gonna have to reschedule.
I don't think homecoming's ever that late in October.
Well, it's today, twenty-first, my, oh, yeah, twenty, we get the twenty the last. Someone come in Wyoming, no.
Oh, yeah, you're right. No, we did that one year.
You're going for three in a row watching Wyoming? So with that last. Twenty-first, twenty-second, third, October. No, we talked about specifically, not, not those two, no.
Homecoming week, we had to be doing, you're hearing it, seriously? It's, the kids were miserable, I mean, it's the one week of the whole year that they were miserable, but they didn't get to have it, basically.
October, three days out.
When you do different things, people might take that.
When I'm off board, she can eye on that.
Fall break.
There you go.
Well, it's called that.
Well, that's what I'm, I'm kind of looking at, like, I think I'd be more interactive with my household, but that's, okay.
Fair enough. Are we using a similar structure for conferences this year? Everybody seemed to roll up a bit. Any other question, comments? Do we motion to approve the two thousand nineteen, twenty academic calendar?
So what?
Second?
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
So date, time, and place for hearing on flexibility legislation.
So being, see, kind of go together, so last year, the legislation, legislators passed a bill allowing districts to take money out of three categories to use for other purposes, preschool, out of homeschool, and out of professional development to use for other general public expenditures. We have an excess in our homeschool that we'd like to take and use that to pay for this Amplify people. I don't want to pay any salaries out of that because this is one-time money, I'm not sure what you need, something at recurring salary. Curriculum purposes like this Amplify, would use of those funds.
I have one question, question on Amplify that I forgot to ask, when they, they provided, what, a couple, three days of professional development, is that just a one-time deal? Really, can we break that up throughout the course of the seven years? Because I know, because we're, you know, God forbid, if we have new science teachers, you know, we like the ones we got, but there might, that some might be subterfular.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great question, I can definitely reach out to TME and see how long does that go for.
I think the question is, is that three days in a row, right? Was that your question?
Well, because it says, I don't know, it says two, two days of, two full days of professional development, it's like three thousand dollars.
I just, we could negotiate that, like, splitting it up, or doing some half-days, or, that's one thing we were trying to determine, do we have some at the beginning of the year, is that needed for that, do we look more at the tech piece?
The other thing I would say, to make sure you contact those other two school districts, because a lot of times when you can piggyback, then you reduce some costs, too.
Because I'm assuming year one is gonna look like this, but year seven is gonna be looking, I would hope, it looks a lot different.
I would agree, that's a great question.
That's just curious, is that, is just all one, your first year, or can we bust out all over?
Half-days for six years?
So to use any of those flexibility funds, you have to set a hearing, all the public hearing, just like put it on the calendar, in order to move those funds for any purpose. So that's what letter V does.
Okay.
Okay.
So what we want to do with letter V is set it for next board meeting, Tuesday, March twenty-six.
That's it's gone.
So we set the hearing date for Tuesday, March twenty-six?
Yeah.
That's your motion, yeah.
So do.
Flexible legislation. Aye. Favor?
Aye.
So that's when we're gonna, going to approve the Amplify.
So that's, I have it on there, but you can approve hanging that, or you just say you want a table until after that, I just put on there for that choice.
Okay, do I have a motion to, that's, should we just?
Let's just table it till after.
I motioned to table Amplify Science, can you let me spit it out first before you?
You don't have to say it, I'm the one making the motion, you can't make the motion.
I said, do I have a motion?
You don't have to say it.
Is that a motion?
I move to, I move the table to Amplify Science until the next board meeting.
Second. Aye.
Favor, aye. All right, exempt sessions, motion?
So what?
Second. Thank you, thank you, everyone. Two seconds, that was James. The person before that was Keith, and then Diane.
So someone had to shut down the AP release desk.
Tell Scott Rowden by, and watch it. Bye, Scott.